This conference will now be recorded.
Oh. I can see how many times they get you. Oh, fine. Wet baking soda.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry.
You have to be careful that space in your system if you start to swell up. Well, I mean, in the future, in the future.
It's how you do it anymore. I'm glad you're feeling better.
Um, boy, they're terrible. I did that once when I was a kid. I was moving a big pile of grass and we were on the north side of Dad's house one. And he dumped it there and Mom got mad at him. I walked up the front door. The second I walked up the front door, she locked it. I went right over there and it was, um, bumpy. And they were, I ran back to that door. I hit that door, broke the door, and I hit it and it was locked. I mean, I just cracked, I cracked the jam. And I'm pounding on the door, let me in, let me in. And Mom's back there going, why? Just go around and go let me in. Finally, she wouldn't let me in, so I'm getting, all the way to the fashion house. I get in there, I have like forty of these things on my back.
Forty?
Forty on my back.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, we'll call this meeting. This is Soudalia City Council order. Uh, first on the agenda, we have a prayer and pledge of allegiance. Uh, Captain Mattson, you have the floor to lead us through that.
Would you join me in our invocation this evening? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your blessing on this Soudalia City Council and its guidance for our mayor, administrators, staff, and members as they meet to hear about and discuss and make important decisions for the betterment of our community. We're grateful for their dedication and service to our city. We ask your protection of all our first responders, police, sheriff, fire, ambulance, CMT's hospital staff, uh, all who work day and night to serve and protect us often in the peril of their own, uh, well-being. Tonight, especially honoring Nathaniel Neville, uh, who is now being promoted in the fire department to driver. And that's got to be a terribly important, important thing with a look at the size of the trucks out there and to be able to handle one of those. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic for which so many have fought and died to create and preserve for 246 years. Bless all those working today in military and civilian jobs throughout the world, here and throughout the world, to protect our way of life. Kingdom is safe from those who would change that freedom for tyranny, both from without and more sadly, from within. And now, as we leave this evening, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. And all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Robinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Oldham?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Here.
And Bliss?
Here.
Well, I'll now open our, uh, public hearing with regards to the, uh, 2022, uh, tax rates. So, anyone has anything that they would like to address council with regarding that? If they could go ahead and please step to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Having heard no public comment, I'll go ahead and close this hearing. Uh, up next, we have a proclamation reading, and this is for West Central Independent Living Solutions, WILS. So I'll go ahead and read that. Whereas this year marks the 25th anniversary of West Central Independent Living Solutions, WILS, and since 1997, WILS is a Missouri center for independent living, has served as a consumer-driven nonprofit resource center. WILS empowers people with disabilities to take advantage or to take charge of their lives and live as independently as possible through five core services. Advocacy, independent living skills, information and referrals, peer support, and life transitions. And whereas there are over 7,000 citizens with disabilities in Pettis County and over 33,000 citizens with disabilities in our six-county service area to include Mitten, Henry, Johnson, Lafayette, Pettis, and Celine. And whereas 51% of the staff and board of directors are persons with disabilities, we are who we serve. The WILS board consists of President Rob Crum, Vice President Ron Williams, Secretary Christie Millen, Treasurer Barbara Mayfield, and Members Ashley Huff and David DeFren. And now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim August 15th, 2022, as West Central Independent Living Solutions Day. Extending on behalf of the city council and all our citizens, our highest commendation to the membership and staff of WILS for the positive and successful programs and policies they have initiated and supported and their many accomplishments during the last 25 years. I believe we have some representatives from WILS. Thank you all, step forward and accept them. All right, moving along, we have a promotional, uh, penning. Uh, Chief Irwin, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. As everyone, have a good weekend. So as fire chief, I never quite figured out how long I should make these, how short these should be. I whittled this down from 17 pages, so, um...
Firefighter Neville, where are you?
Go on up. Firefighter Neville, as you know, was just here a few months ago. He was pinned to this firefighter badge. Um, firefighter Neville spent 10 years with the Soudalia Fire Department, um, member a couple of years ago. Um, he left to spread his wings, went to Springfield Fire, did some military service, um, brought back a significant amount of, um, training and knowledge that we are putting to use here with the Soudalia Fire Department. Um, firefighter Neville got his first eligibility for driver, tested, and, um, basically was promoted. He was hands-down the second favorite person for driving position. Um, so tonight, his wife Stephanie will be pending his, um, driver badge. So congratulations, driver Neville.
That's... Driver Neville.
Yeah.
Congrat... Thanks, sir. Congratulations.
All right, the next, uh, item on our agenda is approval of previous session's minutes. This is the council meeting that occurred on August 1st, 2022. Do I have a motion in the second?
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, next, we have the rule call of various standing committees. Finance Administration is up first. Chairman Richardson, you have the floor.
All right, well, uh, I have two items up. Uh, for the first one, I'm going to hand this over to Kelvin Shaw.
Sure. Um, we had our public hearing, uh, earlier, uh, at the start of the meeting that is required every year for, uh, for us to set our tax rates. Um, basically, there's a process that we have to go through that, uh, goes through the Hancock Amendment calculations. The Hancock Amendment is named after the senator, I believe it was, that, uh, that proposed that constitutional amendment that basically says that, um, uh, cities or counties and other taxing jurisdictions essentially cannot benefit from just arbitrarily raising the assessed valuation on property. Uh, so it's basically such a limitation that our, our tax revenues cannot grow any faster than, uh, the lesser of 5% or the consumer pricing there. So it goes through that calculation that it takes the assessed valuation, takes the allowed revenue growth based off of your levies that were approved by the voters, and then, um, divides that out and sets a limitation on how much that levy can be. That process has to be gone through, uh, and then, uh, council has to hold a public hearing, which we just did, uh, based off of what we proposed those rates to be. And then, uh, after that public hearing, council can, can consider an ordinance to set those levies for this year. And then, we have to, after that ordinance is passed, we send this back through the county clerk to the state auditor's office. The state auditor's office reviews those calculations again and, and the levy and certifies the levy as we can, uh, can do those, uh, or assess those taxes as of, um, as of the end of the year. And then sends that certification back to the county collector or through the county clerk, but through the county collector to input those on bills that go out in November. So I'd be, have any entertaining, any questions or comments?
Any further council discussion? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-131. An ordinance levying and providing for the collection of taxes for the year 2022 in the city of Soudalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-131. An ordinance levying and providing for the collection of taxes for the year 2022 in the city of Soudalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Rule call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
That's seven yeses and one absent.
All right, for my second item, I will hand it again over to Kelvin Shaw.
Thank you, sir. Um, this is the chart again. Y'all are pretty used to seeing by now the, uh, basically the trends that we watch very carefully on the collections of the primary taxes or the taxes that we collect. And as you can see, the sales tax is up 7.7%, up significantly fourth month, and 7.7% year-to-date. And then, uh, use tax also was essentially even this month, but then up 18.4 or 16.4% of year-to-date. And then, uh, just as, uh, the reminder that support June sales at the cash register. And the net fiscal year-to-date is up 565,457 or 8.4% between the sales and use tax, which creates a budget variance. If you remember, we budgeted 4% increase, so the budget variance is 297,000 favorable budget. We're above, are ahead of our budget. Also, when you look at the franchise and cigarette taxes, again, we are up, um, year-to-date. Um, and, uh, most of that is from our gas franchise tax. And I believe that that really is from weather-related, and so I question whether or not that will level out throughout the year as the warmer temperatures, uh, the trend line is certainly going down for the, for the rest of the year. Um, the electric, if you look at the, um, at the current month, we are up significantly. And that is really because last year, uh, the electric, uh, franchise tax didn't come in until after the beginning of, the, uh, beginning of August. And so you really are seeing zero last year and you'll see two months next year. So that'll level back out next month. Um, the, uh, let's just be sorry. Um, the transportation taxes, again, the gas tax is up 13%, but we're starting to see that level off and, and level out. As the higher prices of fuel taxes are fueled, uh, people are undoubtedly driving less, so I expect that to come down. Um, but it's, uh, we're up 13% year-to-date. And the vehicle sales tax has already fallen off pretty significantly, and actually, we're down now 17.7% on, um, vehicle sales tax. Remember, the sales tax on a vehicle is where you, where you, your address from where you license it at, so we get that through the sale. So, um, certainly, fewer vehicles being purchased, uh, this year as opposed to last. And then, just finally, on property taxes, uh, you know, not much to see there because the bulk of those receipts come in really in two months, September and January. Be happy to entertain any questions or comments.
All right, that's all I have, Your Honor. All right, moving along to the public works. Uh, Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
All right, we have five items tonight in the Public Works Committee. The first item tonight is a bid and agreement. And this is a project that I'm excited to see to get started. Uh, this is the milling and overlaying of Thompson Boulevard. The last couple of years, it's been pushing through the street life on that road, and we were able to get that accomplished. Uh, I was pushing, you see, that, that item ranked high in the budget process, and we get, we were able to do that. And now, tonight, we get to accept the bid and agreement with Higgins Asphalt and Paving Company Incorporated to finally put this whole personal project complete. It came in under the budget allowance of it. The budget allowance is 490,000, and we got this in around 472.
Any council discussion? Well, I'd just like to submit Public Works to be able to get that in under budget. I know right now, the way materials are, uh, that's quite a feat to bring something in under budget. So, thank you, Director Robert.
I assume, I didn't get to ask you a start date on this. I assume probably within a month, because I know the hot weather is definitely needed when paving, but... There we go. All right.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-132. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for mill and overlay of Thompson Boulevard.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor? All opposed?
Bill number 2022-132. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for mill and overlay of Thompson Boulevard.
Final passage.
Second. Rule call, please.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Seven yeses and one absent.
All right. The second item we have tonight is an annexation and utility service agreement with Mark and Catherine Witzakic at 2230 West Country Club Drive.
Any council discussion on this? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-133. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-133. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system.
Final passage.
Second. Rule call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Cross is absent. So seven yeses and one absent.
Third item is another annexation and utility service agreement with Michael Serkin at 2610 James Lane.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-134. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-134. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system.
Final passage.
Second. Rule call, please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. And Foster?
Yes.
Seven yeses and one absent.
The fourth item I have tonight is a change order for the Pelham Drive lift station. Evergy has upgraded their electrical configuration, and the contractor has requested additional reimbursement for this requirement.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-135. An ordinance authorizing change order number three for the Central Regional and Pelham Drive Lift Stations.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-135. An ordinance authorizing change order number three for the Central Regional and Pelham Drive Lift Stations.
Final passage. Second.
Rule call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yeses and one absent.
The fifth and final item I have tonight is a resolution for a grant application. Uh, Brenda Audrey, our Public Works Director, has learned of some, of some federal grants that may be able to help us reduce or eliminate brutality and serious injury accidents by improving the roads. So in order to qualify for these grants, the city must first adopt a vision establishing this goal and then develop a plan to achieve it. Therefore, staff recommends approval of a resolution establishing that goal and to authorize staff to apply for the grant funding to develop the plan. The grant would require a 20% match, and we anticipate the total plan will cost around 250,000. So the match would, appropriate requirement would be 50,000. And if we're successful in obtaining this grant, staff will bring to council and ordinance to formally appropriate the funding.
Any council discussion regarding this resolution? Having heard none, call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 1971. A resolution adopting a safe system approach to roadway safety for the city of Soudalia with a goal of eliminating traffic deaths and serious injuries by 2032.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, up next, we have Community Development. Uh, Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, we have, what do we have? We have three items. First, we have, um, let me see, sorry, we do this together. Um, funding application support for Deer Brook Villa Phase Four. And the developer of the Deer Brook Villa Senior Citizen Affordable Housing Project is now planning Phase Four. This development has been hugely successful in providing much-needed affordable housing for seniors in our community. One only needs to look at their waiting list of over 170 individuals wanting to move into these apartments to recognize the need as well as the desirability of their model. Phase Four will add another 38 units to the complex along with another community building. Partly because of this development, the group selling the land and developing this random area is extending land drive to connect up with 10th Street, which will also help transportation in the area and bring more opportunities for development. Um, it is recommended adopting a resolution expressing the city's support for the development and their application for tax credits.
Mr. Lingle is here this evening, uh, from MBI Development. If any council has any questions regarding this resolution.
I gotta tell you this story. It happened like that. I was here 10 years, you guys started off Phase One. Three years apart, I ended up Phase Two. And there was a lady, I can't remember her name, like, council, I don't know if she's...
I think it was. She said, "Mr. Lingle is councilwoman currently."
I think it was. I think you're right. "Mr. Lingle, would you think about Phase Three and Four?" My, my jaw is... I didn't say one. Not a word. Four years later, I did Phase Three, and there we are, Phase Four. She called it. But we really do appreciate your support. Uh, you will know, as the council already said, success is not even the, it's not even the word. It's been unbelievable, the need for affordable housing for seniors in Soudalia. So we're looking forward to it. We appreciate your support, and, uh, I'm not gonna roll out Phase Five, Mayor. Thank you.
Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 1972. A resolution supporting an application by D. Kim Lingle and MBI Development Company, a Missouri corporation, for Missouri Housing Development Commission funding for Deer Brook Villa's Phase Four.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Here's the resolution.
So the second item we have tonight is we're gonna look at some demolition of some structures due to the size and proximity to other structures and/or other complexities of a couple demolitions on our schedule. Staff will split a bid from outside contractors. Uh, these houses have gone through the dangerous buildings process, and the timeframes allotted for the owner to complete the demolitions have expired. Therefore, the city is left with the unfortunate task of needing to perform abatement for the public good. Um, we recommend award of two contracts for the demolition of 701 South Lafayette by Schultz Rucking for $8,500 and 521 West Fifth by Earthworks Excavation for $16,200.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, call for the reading of the first ordinance regarding 701 South Lafayette.
Bill number 2022-136. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for demolition of structures located at 701 South Lafayette.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-136. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for demolition of structures located at 701 South Lafayette.
Final passage. Second.
Rule call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
That's seven yeses and one absent.
Now, we will call for the reading of the second ordinance regarding 521 West Fifth.
Bill number 2022-137. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for demolition of structures located at 521 West Fifth Street.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-137. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for demolition of structures located at 521 West Fifth Street.
Final passage. Second.
Rule call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Oldham?
Yes.
Seven yeses and one absent.
The third item that I have for the evening is a proposed street name change for a portion of North Monata Avenue to W.T. Morris Avenue. Uh, we've received a petition signed by the vast majority of the property owners along North Monata Avenue requesting that the name of the street be changed to W.T. Morris Avenue in honor of Mr. Morris's significant contributions to our community and country. Among Mr. Morris's contributions are that he served honorably in the United States Air Force with a prolific creature and organized the community around building two churches. He has been described by those that knew him as an advocate for and giving a voice to the unheard, fed the hungry, and gave shelter to those without. The process to change the name of the street requires a resolution by council to establish this intent. Then we will work to notify the rest of the interested parties and hold a comment period.
So Pastor Jones is here this evening. If council has any questions for him. He approached me, oh, it's been back in the spring, and wanted to get this together and change the name of that street, which changing the name of the street isn't in small feet because, I mean, you're affecting a lot of lives there. So I told him, you need to give the best way that I've seen this, tried and failed before, right? And the whole deal is you got to engage the community and get them involved and get them to buy in. So I gave him the list of the property owners, their names and addresses, and said, go out, you know, get your petition together, talk to them, explain to them why you want to do this and get them behind it. And him and the congregation of True Vine totally did that and they got everybody behind it. So that's why that resolution's sitting here recording. Any council discussion regarding that? All right. Well, having heard done, I'll call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 1973, a resolution proposing to change the name of North Monata Avenue extending from West Main Street to West Clay Street to W.T. Morris Avenue in the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Thank you. Up next we have Public Safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Public Safety has two items to consider. One is the purchase of two Dodger Angles from the Kansas State Highway Patrol. Chief, would you like to address that or maybe some questions? These are used vehicles and we have done this before evidently.
Yes, as you guys know, it's supply chain issues and the issues with getting new vehicles throughout the United States were in the police business no different. We've had no ability to get any new vehicles for this current calendar year. I found two vehicles with Kansas Highway Patrol that are set up very similar to what we use in our patrol cars and they're a very reasonable price. And so we've identified those as two vehicles to purchase. Right now, our mark fleet is continuing to age and of course every day we're putting miles on them. So this will allow us kind of in a sense of a stopgap to get us to ordering some vehicles next year and hopefully getting some new ones.
Any questions?
Having heard done, I just need a motion to authorize the purchase of these two vehicles.
Some of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Then there's a budget amendment that we need to accept and a grant that we need to accept. The, let's see, the grant expenditure would be for a message board for the police department. And then there's an ordinance necessary to amend the budget for that amount. So I'll need a resolution authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditure.
Any further council discussion? Chief Ward, did you want to speak on those message boards? Because it is kind of interesting what they've got going there.
Sure. We've got a couple of different things going. First off is that our traffic unit applied for a grant with MoDOT to purchase a sign board. This is a portable sign board and the idea behind it is that we can reduce secondary crashes or incidents when there's a current incident going on. But it is foldable and our plan is to put it in one of our SUVs that has a little bit more room. We can carry it around. Officer can take it out, set it out on an incident. We can put a message on it, you know, for example, congestion ahead, accident ahead, that sort of thing, or any other issue that we might be able to reconcile with. So we need the acceptance of that grant. That's part of this. And then it was not a budgeted item, so we do need a budget amendment to increase the revenue because it is a reimbursement file grant. Thank you.
All right. Any further council discussion? Having heard done, I'll call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution number 1974, a resolution authorizing an increase in budget expenditures for the fiscal year 2022-2023 relating to extending grant funds on a message board for the police department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. And next we have an ordinance. I'll call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-138, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2022-2023 regarding the expanding of grant funds for a message board.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-138, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2022-2023 regarding the expanding of grant funds for a message board.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
The third item is an ordinance accepting the Strategic Safety Plan Program Agreement. Over the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-139, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the Strategic Highway Safety Plan Program Agreement.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-139, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the Strategic Highway Safety Plan Program Agreement.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
Okay. The next item we have on our agenda is liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
Okay, the first one is a new license for Garrett Volker doing businesses Volkers at 1021 South Limit for a liquor by the drink and Sunday sales license. And the remaining are all renewals. Nicole Walker doing businesses Discount Smokes and Liquor, 2205 South Limit Avenue, Suite D, Packaged Liquor and Sunday Sales, Jody Clement doing businesses Buffalo Wild Wings, 4401 Wisconsin Avenue, Liquor by the Drink and Sunday Sales, and Carrie Wright doing businesses Dollar General at 2500 West Broadway Boulevard for packaged liquor. Carrie Wright doing businesses Dollar General at 2003 South Limit Avenue for packaged liquor. Carrie Wright doing businesses Dollar General at 619 North Ohio for packaged liquor. And Carrie Wright doing businesses Dollar General at 713 East Broadway for packaged liquor.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item is any miscellaneous items from the city administrator or city council?
I would just like to direct this question to Elder Jones and True Vine. I know that you're going to have a ceremony when this happens. Can you let us know when that'll be? Because I would definitely like to attend that particular ceremony. Do you already have one? Oh.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pastor Jones, W.T. Morris successor at True Vine Fellowship. Reason, going back to what Mayor's saying, some of y'all might know W.T. Morris, he played a major part in the Hubbard School to turn it into the apartment. He took over Jones Holy Temple back in the early 1950s. Pastor their church for over 45 years. He is now 92 years old. Still can come to church when he's up to it. But we are having a, this year marks our 100-year church anniversary. And we'll be celebrating on September 10th. We were having a banquet at Hotel Balthwell in the Grand Ballroom. And so we're going to have, you know, I know Mayor's planning on coming and other people in the community is coming. And when we got the signatures, everybody in the community was excited and they got to reminisce about the stuff they remember about W.T. Morris standing on top of their church rebuilding and cut through the roof. And so without getting injured. And so that will be September 10th at 3:00 PM at Hotel Balthwell in the Grand Ballroom. So it'll be an amazing occasion. And so we're planning on doing that banquet to be able to at least announce that proclamation to W.T. Morris as a surprise. So literally, nobody in the church even knows, other than our city administrator, Sister Stella Frazier, and our head deacon, Freddie Fletcher. So it's going to be a pretty big surprise for him, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was on tape, so we won't be a surprise no more.
Any other items?
Yeah, I am pleased to report that we had an update call from our standards and floors and folks that do our ratings, our credit rating for us. Since we are a public entity and we do borrow public funds, we were subject to, or we went out poor and enlisted their help to do ratings for us. They came back and affirmed or reissued our AA minus credit rating, which is our long-term credit rating, and changed the outlook from negative to stable. Back in 2020, we were, if you remember, we were borrowing the funds to do the second community center right at the worst time of the pandemic had just hit. And so when we asked them to do our credit rating for them, they updated, they left the credit rating at AA minus due to the uncertainties of the pandemic. They changed the outlook from stable to negative. And they had left that through that time period, so they wanted to come back and do an update. The mayor and I went through several things with them and they came back and said that it appears to them that we weathered the storm very well. And due to our longstanding financial, fiscal discipline, they reaffirmed the AA minus. I will say that our economy, the pure numbers that they look at for our economy would have a 7A plus. But they are able, by their policy, to uptick that a half a point or one step to the AA minus through their view of our strong financial management and our fund balance and liquidity. So if it matters, that gives us, from what I understand, I've asked the folks in the financial world what that means and it means about a half a point in our interest when we go out and borrow. So through your all's fiscal discipline, that saves us money on the forward walk.
And the removal of the sunset.
Yeah.
Buy the text, buy the holders. That didn't hurt. Part of the yes, yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Anything else?
Yes, I hope everyone's noticed that the grass that I complained about, part of it got cut. I'd like to take credit for that, but we really don't have a clue who did that. Somebody came in there and cut the grass and bailed it and carried it off. Now, they didn't do the whole lot, but they did 20% of it. So we need to say thank you to somebody because maybe they were looking through, I don't know, the cows must eat it. They did a nice job. I thought it's nice. I missed three days riding by and I came back and it's gone. So whatever.
Well, we took the opportunity to get that ring, hey, there.
Yeah, whatever.
All right. Well, having heard, not hearing anything else or the other thing?
Just glad the pair's back.
Yes.
Remind everybody about that.
I'm going to open up the meeting for the Good Welfare portion. If there's anyone from the audience that'd like to address council, if you could go ahead and set the microphone, state your name, your address, then you've got three minutes to say whatever you'd like to say. Well, since we don't have any takers tonight, we'll go ahead and move on. I will entertain a motion to.
I motion to move the closed-door session for legal advice in real estate.
Second.
Let's see, let me check. I need a rule call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Where's Rihanna? Oh. Doctor Walker, my baby. Yeah, I can't remember where I got it. Do I? I need more harder staples. I don't know. No, 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 I'm on my way. My wife's got it. Yeah. I should be here until. Which you bought me my last. I need to be here until you have to do one item. Looks like we're going to have to report. Okay. That's what I thought. It's getting infused at us. I'll just meet you guys down at the first. I'll get you down there. Now, do I need to come back? I don't need to come back.
Most of that, open, open session.
I have a motion to reopen the regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rule call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
Okay, we have two ordinances. First one, I'll go ahead and call for the reading of.
Bill number 2022-140, an ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 321 East Main Street from the city of Soudaya, Missouri to Joshua Brooks Heimsthal and Haley K. Heimsthal.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding this?
Bill number. Go ahead.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Bill number 2022-140, an ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 321 East Main Street from the city of Soudaya, Missouri to Joshua Brooks Heimsthal and Haley K. Heimsthal.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call please.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
For the maintenance, Councilman Bliss is excusing himself from. As he has a conflict on the next one.
And he has left the room. All right, call for the reading of the second ordinance.
Bill number 2022-141, an ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 604 West Main Street from the city of Soudaya, Missouri to John Stephen Bliss as trustee under the John Stephen Bliss Revocable Trust dated December 12, 1997.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding this? Having heard done, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-141, an ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 604 West Main Street from the city of Soudaya, Missouri to John Stephen Bliss as trustee under the John Stephen Bliss Revocable Trust dated December 12, 1997.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross is absent. Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss is recusing himself.
I'll now entertain a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.